Welcome to the Mountain City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, March 26th. It's seven o'clock. We're in Mountain City Council Chambers. Can you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
No amendments.
Okay. And I get a motion to approve the agenda.
I believe that we approved the agenda.
Okay. And can I get a second?
A second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, that passes. Then we got the consent agenda. Does someone want to go through those?
Well, I can read the consent agenda. I have one thing on C. It should, I think, say 7:30 PM to 12:30. 12:30. It should say 7:00 AM to 12:30 PM.
Oh, AM versus PM?
So the consent agenda, A, approve payment of claims, B, approve minutes, March 12th, 2024 regular meeting, March 12th, 2024 workshop meeting, C, approve resolution approving public gathering permit for 2024 Mound Farmers Market, Saturday, March 25th through Saturday, October 12th, and again, it should say 7:00 AM to 12:30 PM with reduced fee due to community benefits, D, approve 2024 Planning Commission work plan and staff project list, and E, pay request number three in the amount of $15,646.50 to Mingor Construction for the 2023 lift station improvement city project, PW 2303.
Okay. Does anybody want to pull any of those, talk about any? All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember McIneney?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. All right, thanks. All that passes. Number five, we got comments and suggestions from anyone that the topic is not on the agenda? Anybody want to come up? You're the only one. All right, well, here and none. We'll go to number six, mound state of the water.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Simmons, your consulting city engineer. Today, we are back in front of you to discuss where the state is of our water. I think this is timely and pertinent. There's been some news lately, some things happening. We've got some money. Also, it's worth taking this time, I think, to remind us, all of you, everyone watching at home, where things are at and how we are proceeding on their behalf, as well as, you know, what is being done behind the scenes to strive for safe water for mound residents. Hit it, Jesse. So, purpose and process. I kind of hit that, but our purpose here, provide the residents of mound with safe and affordable drinking water. That is a statement that's sort of cobbled together from a couple of title slides and some things that we've talked about in the past in this venue. If you think I got something wrong there, please hit me with it, but I think it's pretty safe to say that we are all aligned in that purpose and vision. Not to go too far back, but just to remind everyone, we studied the solution. We looked at a number of different options. We talked about it at length, and what we've come up with is the solution is to construct a water treatment plant to remove the manganese. It will remove some other things, but our primary suspect that we are after is the manganese. This solution, in all of its pieces and parts, has a $36 million price tag. So that's sort of setting the playing field for where we are today, why we've been after money, why we are struggling to figure out how to pay for this, especially with knowing that we have made all these investments in mound's water system in the past. So, our drinking water at the source. In these two tables, the test results on the left were taken in 2021 after the notifications from the Department of Health, and I zoomed in there on the manganese. I left all the rest of the test results. That max contamination limit, in this case, it sort of, it has an asterisk. I took that off because I didn't want to include all the other text, but that max contamination limit, you've heard this term from me before, is a health-based limit, which means that it's not hard science, but that is the milligrams per liter that we are using as a guide. And so, just to sort of audit ourselves, we went out, we took some tests. We want to look and see where things were at, and as you can see, actually, we're missing a zero in some of those, but nope, that is correct. So you can see, well, number three in 2021 had .761 milligrams per liter, and in well number eight, .475. And you can see, these samples were taken from across the community in different places. We wanted to get a good idea of what the water is like coming out of the taps, and we are still in that high range. And that is, you know, scattered around. We go anywhere from .403 to .634. So that does leave us in a place where the notification that we made previously to our residents, that we were exceeding the health-based limit, you know, that if you are consuming the water, especially for infants, children, you know, formula-fed infants, you should consider those other measures. So, go ahead, Jesse. Funding to date. This is one where we get to actually celebrate some of our efforts a little bit. Many of you up there, Jesse, they're working hard on this. You know, we've been at this for a couple of years now, but we have asked a number of places, the state of Minnesota, for direct appropriations. We've asked the federal government for direct appropriations, and then we continue to submit our project to the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, which is the IUP and the PPL, the Intended Use Plan, and the Project Priority List. And those are considerations for funding that exists on an annual basis. That's primarily doled out as low-interest loans and small grants. So, to date, we've received $10.3 million from the state of Minnesota via direct appropriations, and then we've received just a little under $1 million recently from the federal government via direct appropriations. So that's new. That's a thing to celebrate. We're getting some money. We're gaining some critical mass, but there is still a $24.5 million gap in the funding for us to complete the whole project. So, we've made some progress, but also, we have a long ways to go. One thing to mention, you know, that hopefully we see soon, is the change, the amendment to that bill that lets us unlock that $10.3 million. Jesse, why don't you flip to the next slide? The IUP PPL, apologize for continuing to use those acronyms. We rattle that off a lot, but those monies are administered by the Public Facilities Authority. Ironically, they're the same body that is being tasked with managing the $10.3 million in direct appropriations that we received. And so, I just wanted to go back and revisit every year that we have submitted mound, and you can see, it's been a little bit all over the place, but we're trending upward. And so, in 2022, we got 10 points. We were ranked 343. Somehow and possibly, we went down in 2023. We got less points, but in 2024 was when some new rules took effect, and the PFA has started factoring in manganese. Up until 2024, in this scoring system, they did not consider manganese a contaminant. And so, I think we're going to see that continue to trend upwards. Also, if you look at the full list, mound is sort of among friends, unfortunately, but there are a number of communities that also have a similar manganese problem from a similar aquifer, and we're all clustered together in that 15 points. While that might not sound like a lot, you know, there's almost 1,000 submittals on this list. And so, for us to go from 343 and 650 up to 135, like I said, we're trending upward, unfortunately, but also, that is good for us. This is, in my mind, sort of a backstop. You know, we're going to keep asking for these other sources of funding, these other directed grant programs for safe drinking water, but ultimately, if we are ever asked to come up with a match, or we are ever asked to close a funding gap, or we are presented with a funding gap, this is one likely source. One thing, one tool that PFA has in their box is sometimes they like to refinance existing debt, and so, I don't want to make any promises because obviously, nothing is in front of us, but one thing that we may be presented with in the future is an option to refinance some of our existing bonds that paid for water projects, along with a low-interest loan. And hopefully, that is very small because we are able to procure most of the remaining $24.5 million. So, fingers crossed on that account. So, implementing the solution. It's a little wordy. Bear with me. Like I mentioned, we are working to unlock that existing funding, and I hesitate to use this term because I know there are some politicians that throw it around, but that would bring the project to shovel-ready status. That means that you could unleash us, we could begin design, we could have plans and specs ready to go, even for the things that we don't have funding to build quite yet, and that would be a move on our part that would show how serious we are. And sometimes, there are certain types of funding that ask that question specifically, are you shovel-ready? And you need to be able to hand them plans and specs and say, here you go, may I have some money, please? We're going to continue to submit for direct appropriations. Those follow, you know, usually, the two-year biennial budgeting cycle on both the federal and state levels, so we will continue to ask for those monies. I want to call out, you know, efforts by the mayor, councilmembers, and Jesse, and also, former city manager, Mr. Hoverson. There's a lot of things happening behind the scenes for people that are asking for money on our behalf in general. We will also continue to submit this project to the IUP and PPL, again, administered by the PFA. One reason we do that is that there are other sources of funding that also ask, are you on that list? And so, for us to even be considered for direct appropriations, we have to tell them that we have gotten in line for the low-interest loans, and also, please understand our plight and how we got here, and why we are asking for grants, you know, in lieu of the low-interest loan, and frankly, the PFA at this point would struggle to fund the remainder of the project as a whole as well. And so, then we will continue to push manganese and manganese as a contaminant at the state level. That's sort of a grassroots thing that I'm working on, other engineers in the background, in our interactions with the Department of Health and the MPCA, because they are part and parcel to this situation that we find ourselves in. You know, we were instructed, that was almost four years ago now, during our weird mid-COVID times meetings, right, over in the theater, when we had to stand in front of the public and tell them, we knew we had a problem with our water. And part of that message was mandated by those state agencies, yet they have very little skin in the game in participating with us so far to help us solve the problem. Part of that is that their hands are tied, that manganese is not lead, it's not arsenic, it's not things that have very solid, very well-known maximum contaminant levels, and so, we will continue to push for manganese to be considered in the same way. That will do a couple of things. It will bring the sense of urgency that I think we all feel already in wanting to fix this problem for our residents, but it will bring that sense of urgency to the funding sources as well. Our scores at the PFA on IUP and the PPL will continue to go up if manganese is finally considered a true contaminant, so that will help us. And then, we're likely to see some additional funding set aside for direct appropriations at which point in time manganese is considered a true contaminant. So, and then, hold on, Jesse. I got the E yelling at the bottom there. That is in all caps and bold, which is to keep advocating, continue telling our story, don't stop asking. I don't think I have to remind anyone in here, because I think you were all staunch advocates for this, but I want anybody who goes back and listens to this at home, reads this later, looks at this presentation, is reminded that we are all part of asking for the solution. So, hit it, man. Continued guidance for residents. I wanted to bring some clarity here because it's been a couple of years. We don't talk about this real often, and so, maintain your water softener. And this includes regular salt, or if you're using potassium, that's fine too, but also make sure that your resin media is not out of date. We know, based on the science of how most water softeners work, that that process is likely removing the manganese. Now, that can vary widely based on how old your water softener is, what condition it's in, you know, how you have your water softener set, when the last time was it recharged, whether it's demand-based or whether it's time-based. So, I don't want to put any guarantees on that, and if anybody is relying on this to bring them safe drinking water, we strongly, strongly encourage that you have your water tested post-water softener, but you need to know that that water softening process does remove manganese in the correct situations, which is most. If it's working properly, if it's softening your water, it's likely already flocking out that manganese. So, I threw a couple of names up there, just to remind people, and there is a list out there that we have linked to from the water page on our website, I believe, still, of the testing laboratories in the Twin Cities, and these are the closest ones that also will test for manganese. Not all water testing labs will test for manganese. That Tri-City William Lloyd Analytical Lab actually happens to be the back door of the Bloomington Water Treatment Plant. That's probably the one I've been to most often. Just another reminder, I mentioned this before, but bottled water is still recommended for infants. Those health-based limits, that .3 milligrams per liter for infants, obviously, you saw the test results before, we are exceeding that, and so, if you have infants that are drinking formula made with water, that should be bottled water unless you have a high level of confidence that you are removing that manganese. And then, that health-based limit is 1 milligram per liter for adults. Also, because we've talked about this before, manganese is poorly absorbed through the skin, so bathing, washing, showering, using untreated water to wash your own dishes or to wash your car is a pretty safe way. You're unlikely to absorb manganese from the water that way. So, I want to put people at ease if they are using unsoftened, untreated water. You don't need to get bottles of water to wash your car. That would be wasteful, so let's not do that. So, that is the bulk of my presentation, but I anticipate there may be some questions up here from you all.
Does council have any questions for Brian?
We're doing that good of a job? There's no question?
Doing a good job.
The we, we, not me. Us together.
I just have some kind of boldness on what we're talking about, just to kind of recap everything. So, this was brought to us, I remember, was it January or February of '21?
Yes.
And it's March of '24.
Right.
So, we get that that's been a long time. It's been as long as I've been sitting here. It's getting old.
It's also a good example, right, of like, how sometimes other government moves, even though all of you up at the DAS have been able to move on it and say, we want to do something with it.
Right.
We're still waiting for money.
So, in the last, how many years, we've been doing a lot of things? So, one of the things is we're working with both Representative Myers and Morrison, that's our state legislators, and again, I don't know about the rest of you, but multiple phone calls, emails, meetings. We just, in December, mailed the letter to the governor that was signed by all of us, requesting help. Now, he didn't do kind of a project list this year, unfortunately, like he did last year, but at least, you know, he got our letter. We, maybe not every meeting, but I'd say every, you know, handful of meetings, we're definitely talking about water updates, what's going on. It's in a lot of our newsletters, it's on our website, we have a water tab on our website. Again, we did get $10.3 million for this last year. We're trying to unlock that money. We can't spend it right now. I got a message from Representative Myers that it was just passed out of the House Committee, the correct verbiage, per se. So, we had to correct our verbiage, saying that we don't have to have all of our funding upfront to be able to spend this money. So, we had to read verbiage of this thing, send it back. Again, just got passed out of committee, so that's a good thing. Now, I guess it goes to Senate, and then hopefully gets passed here by the end of session. Again, once we get that money, we're going. I mean, it's full speed ahead. That'll pay for the design, as well as some water main works, right?
Can I add to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jason, so I want to make it clear, we are all in lockstep that the full solution is the $36 million that we're talking about, but looking at the pieces of that, there are some things, some trunk water main, prepping the site, drilling another well.
Right.
You know, the treatment plant itself that can be bid and constructed separately, and so, we're going to do our best to make sure that we use the money, but use it as soon as possible and use it responsibly. So, I don't want anybody to think, well, you guys were able to get going with just $10.3, why do you need more? The full solution still costs $36 million, but we're going to get going.
And I'll actually just read it here. It's for grant to the city of mound to pre-design, design, and construct a new clean water well, decommission, and seal of wells four and number seven, installation and replacement of trunk water mains between water towers three and eight, pre-design and design of a water treatment facility. That's it. That's the whole thing. But those exact words, I guess, lets us unlock this money if it gets passed. So, hopefully, that'll go, like you said, your last slide, again, residents, emails, phone calls, anybody on the committee, anybody down there, just bug them until we get this. We just got $959,752 from the federal congressional directed spending. That's brand new. We just announced that, I think, last council meeting or the one before, if I remember right. So, we want to say thank you to our two senators and our congressman for that. We just spent basically a day on the Hill. We had, again, meetings with Smith and, or, sorry.
Kelly.
Kelly Morrison and Andrew Myers. So, we had our kind of a personal meeting. We spent the day down there. You guys came and Maggie, so we appreciate the time and energy on that. A couple of things to comment on is, why aren't we just doing this tonight and being done with it, right? Now, we could, we could just literally just pass something right now and say, we're all just going to pay for it, right? No, the problem is that your water bill is going to double, basically. It's not, it's not going to work. So, we could, if we wanted to, but that's, we can't. We already have one of the highest water bills as it is, and it's just not going to work, and I'm not for that unless anybody else wants to talk about that. That's just not going to happen. The other thing is, we're $4 million in the hole in our water fund as it is. So, a handful of years ago, council of the past decided to not raise, and I think, did they just freeze it, or did they actually cut it?
In one year, they cut it, but I believe the next year, it came back up again, and then it was frozen.
And then they froze it for how many years?
Yeah, but don't trust my memory on that either.
Yeah. So, unfortunately, that's where we're at. So, we're in a big hole as it is. I've tried to figure out other ways. Could we somehow throw this in the levee somehow? Just can't be done. It has to go on the water side, it has to be in the utility funding. So, the only way to get this done is for us either to just say, hey, we're all just going to raise your water bills overnight drastically, or we get funding from outside sources. So, we're trying to get funding from outside sources. Like you said, we're going to, our numbers came up on our ranking, which is good and bad. I mean, it's good for funding, bad for, we don't want to go up, but, so let's go. We're going to keep trying to do that, keep advocating on the state level, and again, the federal side. And just kind of the last thing, our website, we try to keep it as up-to-date as we can. We have a water tab on there. Like you just said, check your own water. I've done it. I think some of us have done it. It's, was it 26 bucks or something? I mean, you throw, you send it to Eden Prairie, wherever it is over there, Bloomington or something like that.
Yeah.
Comes back with a, I think it was an email that we got back, straight up, just tells you exactly where you're at. So, if you're worried at all, and you're drinking the water, make sure you're doing that. Otherwise, you do have other options you can do. Again, go to the Minnesota Department of Health, was it reverse osmosis? Again, water softener, you know, bottled water, get your own system, per se. So, beyond that, again, we are working. This is literally the main priority of me, and I thank the rest of us, if I can speak for them. We're, every day, this is what we think about. So, we're trying, so again, if anybody sees us after the fact, again, next steps is do your own thing, if you can, because it's going to be a while. Even if we get the funding tomorrow, all of it tomorrow, it's still going to be years before this thing is up and running. So, obviously, take care of your own house and family.
If you told me go today, it would be two years before we'd be drinking manganese-free water from the tap.
Wow, that's pretty good, okay. I was thinking like four, so. Good.
You're not going to tell me go today, so.
No, I know, but.
Right.
Yeah. So, even if we can unlock this money, and then we say we get more next year, whatever, or over time, it's still a multi-year deal. So, I want to say thank you to the staff. I know we've been on lots of emails and calls, and I appreciate you, again, our old city manager as well, any of the staff that has their hands in this, as well as you guys. Thank you. I mean, I've told you, I've told you our last-minute emails to get funding, and you know, that's, that $1 million came from literally a 24-hour turnaround or whatever it was. It was pretty fast. So, again, I appreciate you doing this and being part of this, and keep fighting for us.
Have I ever told you that I submitted one of those over Wi-Fi shared from my phone on a trail outside of Duluth?
There you go.
But I don't say that to martyr myself. I say that because I understand how important this is for both of us, so, you know, it's worth that kind of time.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
What does anybody else have?
Working for you guys.
Comments or questions, or want to say anything? All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now, we're on number seven, motorized watercraft rentals, business license ordinance. And are you on?
I can just introduce it, but I will end up passing it off to Scott.
Okay, okay.
This is in response to the workshop that was on February 28th. Essentially, the discussion was, can the city license for the rental businesses that use mound's various launches, specifically, surf sites? So, with that, I suppose I can pass it off. You're going to be the expert on it.
Yeah, and this is for discussion at this point, and if, depending on where the discussion goes, I think the plan is to bring this back at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, starting on page 780, this is, so this, this is a draft ordinance. If you look through it and there's any changes or suggestions, please provide those. You know, I welcome them. I want to start out by saying is that this, this is focused on watercraft rental businesses, and those are businesses that rent or lease motorized watercraft to other persons, okay, or another person. And a motorized watercraft is something that uses a motor to go through water, something such as a boat, a jet ski, or a personal watercraft. You can see those definitions at the top of that page. The idea here is that this is a business license to operate within the city of mound. This is not licensing the individual watercraft. Those, that is still subject to DNR and requirements of the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District. So, the, and I did, and this is a broad net, too. This is going to, this is going to capture any business that does it, whether they are in the city or out of the city. One of the issues, we want to make sure, is that if they are, if city property is being utilized, including roadways, that these businesses will be subject to certain regulations, and I'll go through that in a little bit here. Actually, I bring it down to page 782, under section 388. They have to comply with the law. This is, you'll see, A, B, they need to maintain insurance, and the insurance requirements are the section above, but it meets the city's minimum tort liability if something happens. The city will be named additional insured, and some other requirements in there that are standard that you would see in insurance that's provided, and that has to be maintained the whole time they have the license. They also need to provide a registrate, or a, they have to have those vehicles registered, as I said, with the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District, and also, whatever regulations there are with regards to vehicles, and those may be changing, I understand, but we're not waiting for that situation, but they still have, we're not, but they have to have that registration requirement, and they also need to provide the city with a list of the vehicles that they're using, showing and with other information that we're requiring, like by the registration number, and to show it's up to date. number, and to show it's up to date. If they change, which happens, add a new vehicle in, they need to, it's their duty to update that list, okay? It's non-transferable, and I came up with the idea that, as of right now, they just need to make sure that it's, if you look at E, that the license to operate the business has to be somehow displayed on their vehicles that are transporting the motorized watercraft. If it's a better idea, or we change the ideas, we can always amend this ordinance, or whatever, however we do it, because, but right now, that would, that's the, what I came up with. So, going back up, with regard to the application process, starting on seven eighty, we're gonna ask them, they go to the city clerk, get a application in there, there's, some of the information's gonna be required, is we need your full name, your residential ad, residential and business address, and we're gonna look, make sure that's an actual address, as a telephone numbers, email addresses, name of the business which the license is sought, then that list I talked about, the motorized vehicles, or motorized watercraft, and any information that is, is deemed by the city required. And if it's a business entity, there's more information, he's provided, let's see who's involved, okay? The, and then the license itself, going back, going down to, well, I'm just gonna back up a little bit, D, on here on the next page, the city, it's an administrative act to whether or not to issue the license. If it is, to, you know, they make a determination that they've complied with everything that's there, if it's denied, they can, they have the ability to appeal to the council. The license is good from, I, I, the next, and E, I picked a date, I said April first to March thirty-first, gives it a year, but it terminates each year, so they have to make reapplication each year. One of the things that the city council will need to determine, maybe this would help with discussion, is what's the application fee gonna be? That would be a separate, we have to update the fee schedule, and that, and once we make a termination, that could be on, along with the ordinance. There is, going back down at seven eighty-two, page seven eighty-two, and section thirty-eight dash thirty, three eighty-nine, there's procedures for, for suspension, revocation. They have, they do have a right to, to a hearing, so it's gonna be revoked, I'm sorry, by the, there's a right to a hearing with, if, if, for the revocation. Now, if they are acting without a license to do the business, it's like any other code violation, it's, you know, it's a, right now, it's at, any code violation, unless it's otherwise stated, it's set as a misdemeanor. So, I think, what I would suggest at this point is, I, I know that, you know, this isn't ju, this isn't just focus on Surfside, it's any, but that's the main spot. If they're, my, my understanding is that there's gonna be some, an increased, probably CSO presence there through ornamental police, they can check, they can check those licenses and make sure, I mean, I think, there's been, Jesse can bring it up to speed, but there's been discussions with that, and if they don't have it, they can, you know, provide them a warning, she away, but if they continue to do it, they're, they're are subject to criminal misdemeanor.
Per occurrence, or like, how does that work?
If it's, yeah, I mean, it's, misdemeanors are, each violation is a separate violation. So, if you show up, then that's a violation, show up again, it's another violation. But we, but that would be between a criminal prosecutor and, and the police would figure that part out.
Would the process of, like, the fee schedule just be kind of up to us for discussion on what maybe other cities have done for the same kind of type of thing?
Well, I don't know if you're gonna find other cities that have done quite the same thing. But, you know, this is akin to, as I've said in the work session, the, the tree services, because they're outside and they come and use the roadways and the infrastructure. You can look at transient merchants, kind of the same, same situation. So, and I, I don't know what those fees are, I haven't looked at those, but that is, you know, I, I think the idea here is to not, not to make it burdensome, but to have some, you know, in line with what other, what other application fees we have, and can always be revisited. If we decide that, that it's, that maybe it's not enough or too much, it can, it can be changed year by year.
What's a good standard procedure for, like, turnaround time, like, if we were implementing something like this, you know, for a business to get notified and purchase the license and?
Well, I, I did talk to, when I was discussing with Jesse, even if this, we, this went implemented in June, once it's implemented, then we'd have to send out notice, and they have to be licensed. But the idea is.
Like, we give you a week or something, or like, would you?
Well, I, it's, it's right away, but, and that's why, I mean, the first year may be kind of a learning period, but at least it's, it'll tell them, you can't be here because you're not licensed. I mean, that's the whole idea here. But I, I believe that when the letters go out with regards to, and Andy sends out saying, you know, here is, here's the rules, this is gonna be included in that.
Cool.
Plus, I, I'm assuming we're looking at, once we do pass it, or, I'm sorry, if it is passed, I should say, and enacted, there was discussion about signage, too, to help sign, and then if the, whoever is there, you know, with regard to enforcement, they can, they'll have the knowledge of the code provision, they're the licensing, and tell them to. So, there's gonna be several different points. So that's why I think that, that this is gonna be, the first year of implementation, maybe more of getting people on board. And, and if they aren't, if it happens, that's great, but we'll, this will make sure that if, in any year, if they're coming down with, using the, the city property and we find out without a license, then, then we have a mechanism to, for enforcement.
I think I was the one that had brought up the signage at the workshop, and just saying how, like, the word launch wasn't anywhere on there, it was like park hours, you know, no drinking, whatever, but it would give a CSO or anybody, like, something to reference, if they are asking someone for a license down there, to be like, if they're like, what are you talking about?
And remember, and it's not a license to use the launch.
Yep.
That's what's important here, this is a license to operate a business within the, the city that, that utilizes the, the city's infrastructure.
Yeah, I was talking about any sign that could make communicating that when it happens down there easier, you know?
And I, and I do think that, like I said, that this is a, this is a way to make sure that somebody's on a roadway, just like we do with other businesses. For instance, I keep going back to, to the tree service, but that's an example. There's, there's insurance there, just, or in the transient merchants, just in case, something happens, that's why you have insurance. So, it'll capture that. So, I, I guess, the, the areas where I wanna make sure, are you, are we, I mean, are we okay with, I wanna give a full year, so it seems to me, April first or March thirty-first is okay, because obviously, you know.
It's usually Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Well.
It's good, good timing.
Yeah, and I, what I was thinking about was the fact that boating season kind of, you know, gears up, maybe April, May, and so, usually it's not as warm as it has been, so people don't put boats in usually, but, you know. So, that, that's, and I said, you know, this is a, can be a little bit of a learning curve, too, so there can be, you know, this can be modified if, you know, after the first year, we didn't make the termination, there's other things gonna be made, but this is a general licensing, general licensing ordinance, and so it, it provide, it does provide what you normally would see in the licensing ordinance.
You know, I think you've just done an amazing job capturing everything, and this is such a win for Mound, because these four or five businesses that's been going on for years profit handsomely up the backs of the taxpayers, and they have had no accountability to Mound whatsoever. So, I think this really helps them be accountable. I do have one thing, you know, one of the companies was planning on this year renting snowmobiles and launching them down at Surfside. So, I don't know if we wanna add snowmobiles to the mix, or if this would just be a whole separate thing for snowmobiles.
Well, we have been focusing on, on watercraft right now. I mean, that's how, I mean, I don't know how the council feels, but if you want, I mean, one of the things I was looking at before was, what's, you know, any motorized rentals. But then I brought it back on to watercraft, because I was looking at the biggest issue that I saw was not, not, I mean, you're talking about one company, as of right now. There were several companies using our roadways, using launches, and could be other launches, too, and this was addressing the immediate need.
Well, I'm just bringing this up because we're discussing.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm just saying, I, I, this, it can be expanded. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think you did a great job. The only thing I don't see, which is, which goes out in the letters, but do we need to be mentioning again, because this is what they really take advantage of, is they use our park to service their clients, to stage their business. Basically, they move into Surfside, and that's their business location. So, I, I feel that, I'm, I'm not sure if this goes here in the letter that typically goes out. I do have a copy of the letter that goes out, and they do talk about staging the business, but that's one of the biggest problems outside of them taking advantage of our wonderful park.
Well, and I, and I do understand that, and so if you take a look at page seven eighty-two, thirty-eight dash three eight-eight, A, they have to comply with all local and state and federal rules and regulations. I did talk to Andy, I believe, it's, he looked at, you know, he looked it over with the ornamental police, and there was a feeling that the ordinances that we have in place are sufficient. And so with that, we don't need to expand on that in this ordinance itself. If, if we, if there's a determination that the, that ordinance is not sufficient, then we would do with that ordinance itself, not in here, because this is more of a, whatever it said, whatever city code and laws apply, you need to, you need to follow those.
So, so that staging of the business can continue to be added to the letter that goes out annually?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, and that, and that will.
Okay.
Isn't there a separate portion of the city code, and I kinda feel like I remember seeing this at the workshop, too, that there's already something in there about operating a commercial business without a permit in the park, like, you're not supposed to be doing that anyway? But that would be, it's not in this, but it'd be a separate violation.
Yeah, that, that, well, that's what I was talking about, is that, that, that is, that obviously, that's a separate violation, and, but if you violate that code provision, that can subject you, you to license revocation, or not.
It's a catch-all for.
Well, yeah. It, because, because.
If they're offending this, they're offending others.
Yeah, and so instead of saying, oh, you have to apply to this code, this code, this code, it's just, you have to apply to anything that's applicable. And that's, and you're right, there is that provision that's available with regard, that's there, with regard to commercial activity. Now, and remember, this is going to be, this is, this is a, as I said before, this is a wide net, so it's gonna capture, you know, with regard to that ordinance section, any, any ordinance section in this licensing, it's gonna capture that to bring everybody into conformity, so that, with the idea that it'll bring some uniformity with regards to the use of city infrastructure. And, and the uniformity means responsibility, insurance, and let's make sure that you're using vehicles that you should be using. As nothing to do with the use of the launch itself, has nothing to do with the licensing of the watercraft, this is the business itself.
Exactly what you asked for. That's great.
Well, yeah. So, are there any other questions on this at all?
That's great.
So, well, I mean, there, there was, so, is there any interest at all in having it expanded beyond just the watercraft at this point?
I don't know. I mean, I guess the winter is obviously not as busy, but that's really not the point. I mean, the point is, if you're using the infrastructure to get a license for motorized rentals, so I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about it, but I mean, it's a lot quieter there in the winter, but if it's an annual business license, it might as well include everything, right?
Well, this year they didn't get a chance, because we had no snow, but they were wrapped up and ready to go.
Yeah, and even if they do or don't, it's like the, the licenses for a full calendar year, you know?
That's why, I don't know if you can just, frozen water is water, right? So couldn't you just have snow?
Well.
The lake is the lake, you know?
Yeah. Well, I, I think that we probably, I mean, the way this works out is that it's, even if they delivered it to somebody's house, and then they, from their house, maybe they had it for a week and they took it somewhere, that's still, that's still here, you know, that's still part of, it's not just a delivery to the launch. So even snowmobiles, that's, somebody maybe have delivered anywhere in the city, for commercial activity, then we would include that in here. So, I would have to think about how, because right now, it was really easy to say water, motorized watercrafts, because, you know, so I just have to think about how we want to, if we do want to expand it to more than that, you know, how we're going to, to do that, because there's other things that are rented, too. There's, I mean, not that we have a spot for it, but people do rent four-wheelers, but not that we rent them here, but maybe they bring them to their house. What if they rent out scooters? Who know, you know, who, you know, who knows where this is going, the rentals are going to expand to? So, I mean, I, if, if the council wants, I can look at trying to expand it out more. I, or, or just focus on the immediate issue that we see right now. I mean, either way, it's, it's doable.
Well, I think it's spot-on for the watercraft.
Okay.
And, you know, just making them be accountable to Mound, I just think is, it's a bravo.
So, maybe, maybe what we do is work on the immediate, as many would suggest, work on the immediate need. Let's see what kind of winter we do have next year. If it is a, you know, if it becomes a problem, we can, this ordinance can be modified to capture them for, we could institute it probably that year and say you need to have it, or the following year, depending on how we, how the council decides. Because there is, part of it, too, is that there is a, I see a need to get this to the next council meeting, because the boating season is starting soon.
Yeah.
And always, suppose you're starting to make more changes, bring it back, what do you think?
Yeah.
I don't know, like I said, to, to your point on that, then maybe we just stick with what it is now, and then make fixing later, if fixing's needed.
So, do we have to have a public hearing for this?
No. Business licensing, you don't have to have a public hearing. So, and the other issue is, I guess, the fee. Do you know what we charge? I'd even look into it for, say, like, the, the tree service or transient merchants for an application?
Tree service is two hundred dollars.
Okay.
For the total, whole deal?
For the whole year?
So we're talking per watercraft?
No, 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 this is.
For business.
Yeah, just the business itself.
Okay. But they gotta have a sticker on each watercraft?
Well, no.
To get it insured, they would. So that's on, that's, that's on them.
Yeah. Well, what they need to do is, because right now is, we're not, we're not looking at the individual watercraft themselves, and if we, what we're looking at is, make, give us a list. You have to have that list with you, and maybe I'll modify this, too, is that you have to have your license available, and the, whatever, so they show up at, at a boat launch, they have to have that license available so that it can be shown, and maybe, one change in here is that list has to be shown, too, so whoever can, they can verify.
List of the?
Of the, of the vehicles that they're using, watercraft they're using. I didn't put a sticker on here, because we don't have, I mean, we, I, I, no, you probably could create one, but, but I don't know if we need to go that far at this point. I, I, it would be nice to see how, how the enforcement goes with that list, and then with the, with the license itself. But.
Well, two hundred dollars seems crazy. I mean, can't we amp it up a little? I mean, if you, if you think about, you know, the businesses, like, for example, the watercraft business down at, across from Back Channel, what's the name of that one, the boat rental place, or?
The Marina?
Yeah, the Marina, or, you know, Bay Rentals. They're only open for four or five months a year, but what are, what's the tax revenue we get from them? I think Catherine Posh, she said at one point, Bay Rentals generates two hundred thousand dollars of tax for Mound a year. I mean, I think we should be considering that, because that's part of the whole point here, to make them accountable.
Well, remember, this is a, this requirement for a license is also, Bay Rentals is part of this, too.
Yeah.
So, if there's. So if there, if we have a higher, higher fee, they're gonna have to pay that higher fee too.
Well, I mean, I'm not here advocating for Bay Rentals. I'm here to advocate for Mound.
Right, right. I was just saying that, that you look at the capture of taxes versus that, it's, it's.
Well, I think we should consider, I mean, two hundred dollars isn't much of a detriment. But, but I agree if we actually enforce this, um, which we haven't done in the past, and if Orno Police actually enforces it, you know, I think we're gonna be able to tackle this pretty well.
And, and I will say that, that if you price some, if you make it so you price people out of the market, it will cause, um, it will have implications that you wouldn't want.
That's why I was asking before about like, I want, I want about the fee schedule and like what we could compare it to, like.
Yeah.
I don't wanna fall out of line, but it's hard to find an example. Like I think we all want to be commerce friendly as much as we can. And just having the license is the most important part. And I agree, two hundred dollars seems pretty low, but I don't really have a means to see where to increase it. Like getting the license is the important part. I don't wanna drive people away and make it like a, like a punishment to operate here, you know, like, so I don't know, I guess, that was why I was asking about trying to find a comparison and maybe the tree, the tree people, that's like, you know, maybe that's fair.
Um, do we, do we have a fee for the transient merchants, you know?
It's, it's, there's different rates dependent on the length of time, like from, from a month or from a day through a year. So I think it goes from, graduates from like seventy-five dollars to some, seventy-five, I think is like a week to like, um, I think two hundred bucks is, I ca, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I, we have a graduated grade.
But there's a, but, but it seems like the maximum year seems to fall in line with what we do with the shade, the tree.
Transient merchants, we don't have a annualized date. I mean, it's based on when they want the rental, when they wanna provide that service or do that service, so.
Okay.
I think the most important part is getting them a license. Like there aren't that many of them where it's gonna be like a revenue generator. It's just, you know, if there's only a handful, I'd be fine with leaving it at like two, three hundred bucks.
And, and as I said, this can be, this is a yearly thing. So your fee schedule is looked at each year. You can always increase and decrease it. Um, it, you know, it's, I, I always looks that you kind of base it on some, if you wanna raise it on something that has a rational basis, um, look to, you know, what's the administrative cost of issuing a license, not putting this program together, but issuing a license. And it's basically, it comes to staff. They look through it. There's no background investigation, you know, we don't have that. And then if they meet all the requirements, then you issue the license. And and then right now, we've said for something similar, we've said two hundred is, kind of falls in line, whether that's too low or too.
I think it takes away any leverage for an argument. Like, I mean, the benefits there, if you pay two hundred bucks, have a license and you get to use the launch. I mean, I know it's not a license to use the launch.
Get to use the road.
You get to use the road. Yeah, you, you get to be there, you know, like, I mean, that kinda, it's a good deal for the business too. Like we could just set it at that to get it on the next council agenda and modify every year from there.
Yeah, after one year, we'd be able to see the usage. We'd know how many times they came through with their boats and then we could make adjustments.
Yeah, and, and if this addresses the over-usage of our infrastructure, then the price must, would be, seem like it would be, would be appropriate. If it doesn't, then, you know, if the infrastructure's still being overburdened, you know, then it can be looked at at that time. That's, 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 that's my thought, but I'm not the policymaker, so.
I, I think what we're putting in place, if this passes, is just a really big win. So I think you wrote it really, really well.
So what happens for the, the Marina that already has boats in the water? Do they still have to get a license since they're using the roads to get them into the water at one point?
So they're not, they're not, they're, they're, they're the one, are they're the ones who are putting people's personal watercraft down, right?
I, I, so I can go there and rent a pontoon.
Okay.
For four hours and then I bring it back there to the dock and then I drive my car out of there.
But it's their dock.
But it's their dock, it's their.
And it's their parking lot.
But how did they get the boats there in the first place? They use our?
Yeah. Well, I mean, according to how I drafted that, that's the wide net that is brought in. If we wanted, but if we can, there can be an exception for, if you wanna accept out if they have their own, because they have a Marina.
They have a Marina, have.
You know, so they, and so they, they're using, in some sense, the infrastructure usage is lessened.
They're paying taxes.
Because they're not, they're not using the infrastructure. We, you can make exceptions.
Well, that would apply to Bay Rentals too, because they have a brick and mortar that they're paying taxes. So where do we draw the line?
Yeah.
They're, yeah, they're delivering.
But this, but this, yeah, but the same, but it's by the same time, the same time, remember, it's not a per boat thing. It's just a two hundred dollars. Get your license and get some, make sure you have insurance, cause that's the big thing. And, and maybe we wanna make sure they have insurance for what they're doing. We, I don't know if that.
It just applies to rentals.
Yeah, anytime you do rentals, it applies. Now, if there's a Marina that is not rentals, you know, so where you're right, where some, where it's just, that does not, this is not applied to that.
Yep.
You know, um, cause I, the whole idea, my understanding was, we wanna make, you know, having these boats here and there and whether it's at a launch or, or, or using our streets, they, there's, there's no insurance. And that's what I heard. That we, we wanna make sure they're following the law and they have insurance. That's the biggest two things I heard.
That, and, and they also don't have a place of business where they can service their clients. So they bring them to Surfside to use as the, your business location.
Right, that's one, that's one of, that's.
But you've covered that.
Right, that's, that's covered, correct. So, um, because they have to comply with their, the business activity has to comply with the law.
And it has to have a legitimate address, which is what we've dealt with.
That's one of the things, when we look at the application, it'll be reviewed. And if it comes up as French Regional Park and not a, not the natural address, that would be a basis for not, uh, you know, a complete application.
Right.
All right. Well, back to the fee, I think my vote is just to cover the cost of the staff. I don't wanna make it hard to do rentals here. But, yeah, cover whatever cost and go off of what we've done before for other things, I guess. Uh, and then do we, talking about signage at the launch, I guess, there's a couple launches. Anyway, would we wanna put that part of that or is that a separate thing?
And put this on there?
Um, we do a separate.
I, I guess that's when, when the signage is put together for information, I guess that's administrative level, they can go through that and figure out what, would it be the best to convey the message?
I, I would expect that we would just add that a city of Mound rental license is required, something to that effect. I mean, the, the, the message from Orno PD is essentially, put it in writing so that they can, like you say, point at it. So when somebody says, I didn't know, you know, that is no longer an excuse. So we're trying to cover as many bases as we can. So the signs aren't printed yet, so it's, uh, that's likely an addition.
And I think the idea, let's make it as simple as possible. So instead of this, it's just a few words.
What you just said is perfect.
So, just so I know, I, there are a few changes. I'm gonna massage it a little bit, but the, but the whole, the concept is gonna stay the same.
Okay.
Here, that's what the council, the direction from the council.
One thing that was a constant problem down there, and we all know the parking is so limited down there. Surfside, does it state in here? Is it gonna state on the sign that there's no business parking of customers' cars there in our, in that little bit, we have, it's such a premium to get a parking space on there.
My understanding.
It is part of the letter.
It's part of the letter, but.
It's part of the letter, but it was never enforced. But again, we've had enough conversations with Chief Horniac. So we can watch to make sure that's, but it says right here, um, uh, you are advised that with the exception of launching the boats at Surfside and Beach and sequent, first come, first served, no commercial activities are allowed. The storage or staging, including personal watercraft units, trailers in the park, and the beach is not permitted. Between user equipment handling and turnover actions, such condition inspections, maintenance, checks, refueling, um, are not permitted in the park. And also it says, business and customer vehicles shall not park in the Surfside Park and Beach parking lot. You are expected to accommodate client parking within your premises. So that's already in the letter.
Okay, but it, do we have an ordinance?
Well, I don't know if that, that's what I was asking, if some of the letter needs to be included in that.
I, I was just told by Andy that we have the ordinances in place.
Okay.
Um, if we, now, I, I will say with regard to the, obviously this code, it's kind of a catch-all. It's like comply with the law, right? And if you don't, you won't get a license or your license is gonna be revoked. Um, and, which means that as we start working through possibly more, the more enforcement here, um, we'll see the deficiencies that we have. I'm not saying what is there in there right now, um, as once, once it's tested, won't be prob, may, may not need to be changed. But I was told there's no reason to change what's there right now.
Okay.
And then, but don't be surprised if we come back to you for an ordinance change because we've learned something.
Well, and if it, if it gets again included with the letter and actually enforced, between, between the business registration and the letter, it seems that all bases are covered. It's just boils down to enforcement then.
Right. And, and apparently having, you know, appropriate signage, you can point to, so.
I agree with Councilman Larson. I mean, if we don't put no business parking on there, then that's still gonna be an issue. So we gotta, I think we gotta say that on there. And remember, the point of the park is not to rent jet skis and park your, or park your car there, I guess. Um, so I think we, we have to specify that.
We should remember when we look at the signage, that both those things are.
And I think.
Before we say go.
I'm gonna work with.
You know, the, the parking thing and the rental license.
Tidy it up.
Yeah. Just what I have this.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Do you think you told us?
No, I, I mean, I will double, what I'll do, uh, Councilmember Larson, is I will double check with Andy too on your issue. I just, I, I mean, I, I was just, I was told that it's covered, but I, I, I'll double check. And if there is, simply because we passed this doesn't mean you can't pass another modification to your code after the fact. But what's, you know, like, doesn't have to be done at the same time. But let's get the licensing, you know, the idea is get the licensing, um, mechanism in place. And I'll check with Andy just to make sure that your concerns on, you know, we have the commercial activity, but your concerns with regard to the, um, the parking and the use of the parking lot are, are covered.
And the parks.
So if we're gonna look at this.
That is covered. That one is covered.
Yeah.
If we were gonna look at this at the next meeting, wouldn't we wanna look at like a signage proof too, maybe to say?
Can you mock one up?
Sure.
And then where do we want them? Like Surfside and Centerview? Is there anywhere else? You know?
Those are the two, right?
I, I don't know.
I don't know if there's.
I'm just thinking of whatever else might be a problem, but.
The other dockings are not listed.
You guys know of any others?
They're not identified.
Those are the only two that I could think of.
Well, I, I don't know if there's any on Dutch Lake.
There is, but, but they're not, they're not identified. Like, you know, on the maps, they're not identified as public docking.
Okay.
I can only think of those two. I couldn't think of another one.
Well, but I mean, it's pretty specific that it is a launch.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we should include that. Okay. I'm just thinking of like other places, like in my neighborhood, for example, if you were to.
Well, there's a bunch of them. We go to everyone.
Do it at Three Points. There's nowhere to park anyway.
Oh, you're talking about the end of.
On a road, you know, but there isn't anywhere to, so the, the parking isn't part of the issue. It's like not every launch needs one, just the congestion areas.
Although people have complained on Three Points because people park in front of their houses.
Yeah.
But is there rental activity going on down there?
Well, what I'm thinking is they're just gonna move, move on to the next place.
Well, that's our goal.
We can always make more signs.
Keep them moving on, but out of Mound.
Yep. We can make more signs if we find a problem.
Yeah. The two then for now?
Sure.
And then, yeah.
And, and I wanna preface it. The idea is that those that aren't gonna comply with the licensing requirements aren't going to be in Mound. You know, this isn't, you know, obviously that if, you know, anybody wants to, has a legitimate business, whether they're stationed in Mound or not, this allows them to all come into performance.
Okay. Do you need a motion to?
No.
A direction or anything?
This was just more of a, instead of having a workshop, we did it here.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Have we determined, is this gonna be Kevin's job to monitor all these applications? Who's gonna do that? I'm just curious. Do we know that yet?
Well, it's the duty of the city clerk to be the one that processes licenses, though, um, this has kinda come together sort of quickly. So offline, I was gonna offer that we can make this a team effort. This is kinda getting, uh, put up, you know, as the season is already sort of commencing. So, um, all hands on deck as it were. And then hopefully by, you know, the year into this, it can be something that's smooth, but, um, yeah.
And, and we're not talking that many businesses. No, we're talking a handful.
Yeah.
But it's new and it could be, you know, there will be wrinkles, so.
Of course, yeah.
So, yeah, so don't, don't, don't expect perfection the first time around, but at least it's in motion and we'll wrinkle out the, uh, wrinkle out the wrinkles.
So just reminder to the proofs with whatever verbiage you guys would recommend with covering everything we just said.
Got it.
Thanks. Okay, we're gonna move to number.
Thank you.
Eight statutory city plan A slash plan B memorandum and discussion. Who's taking that one?
I think that's me again.
Okay.
Um, in your, uh, in your packet and the agenda, starting on page seven eighty-four is a memorandum from me, the council. Um, this just outlays the, the, what a Plan A city is and a Plan B city is. As you know, we're, the city of Mound is a Plan B city. Um, there was some questions or discussion with regards to what, you know, if we did wanna change, how do we change? Um, just, and briefly, a Plan B city, which the city is, is the council is more of a policymaker. Your only real employee is, is the city manager who, uh, you know, runs the, the, that side of the city. Uh, on a, on a Plan A city, um, everybody is the employee of the council. The council has more of a, a micro role in the city. Um, that in, in here, I've talked about, in the memo, I've talked about how to change the form of government, takes a vote. It, it's basically, it, once you get, once you get to the point where you wanna initiate a proposal, takes a voter approval. Um, and then once it's, once it's approved, you work towards the change of city. Um, things to look at if you, is, um, that have to be reviewed is the city code, the ordinances, policies, employee handbooks, and any contracts. And they need to be reviewed, determine if changes need to be made. Um, it can be, uh, you know, all this, I, I don't have a cost on it. It wasn't what I was charged with, but there's, uh, uh, it can be a lengthy process and I'm assuming it would take a certain number of personnel hours to go through all these, the, uh, these changes. So, um, I don't wanna go through, and I don't wanna go through like word for word what's in here, but if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to take them.
Well, I think initially when we started talking about this, we were having issues. So I think that in hoping we could look at options would be, we would have as a council, a little, little bit more control over some of the issues we were having at that point. I think we've solved a lot of those issues. Um, and beyond that, I thought part of the other reason we were looking at possibly switching to an A was that we, we would have more ability to, um, do fines and collect fines for some of these things. And if that's not the case, that's kind of what I was understanding early on. This is, well, this is going on two years since people started going, why aren't we a statutory A? And part of that was, I thought there was a little more ease in trying to do the fee process and collecting.
So statutory cities are, are governed by, uh, by statute. The optional Plan A or optional Plan B, that's just the structure of the government of it, but the laws are the same to it. So with regards to, as you said, the collection of fees and, and code enforcement and those issues, nothing changes if you go to A to B or B to A.
Okay.
It, where, where the difference is, and I do not suggest this because this would, is if you went to a charter city, a charter city, um, that's where the change would happen. But charter cities are, that's a much more expensive and lengthy process with regards to it, and then you create wards and it creates, changes the structure of the council. And, I mean, there are cities that are like that, um, uh, I think Plymouth is a charter city, um, so they, they have wards. Cities like Maple Grove, it's a statutory A city, does not have wards, so. And they're in the same boat as mound with regards to code enforcement.
I'd kind of like to hear from Jesse, since you've been in a position of a statutory A versus your role now in a statutory B. Are you seeing a big change?
I am, as I get more established, as it were. Um, we just, you know, we've been kind of going through, I, I was just, I was gonna say at the end, but, you know, we just, uh, filled the vacant streets position earlier this week. We are now, as of tomorrow, gonna be posted for Public Works Director position, we've been, uh, it's been vacant now for a few months and it's, it's been interesting, uh, because I was a lot more in the weeds on some things that I am not as much anymore. And, um, I think it gives a lot more freedom to the, for the staff to, to really, not that anybody should ever be afraid of their city council, but it doesn't, but they're, they get to work with a, almost like a layer of, uh, between that. And that buffer, I think, I don't know this from talking to anybody, I'm just totally guessing, but I, I think there's a certain amount of freedom to that. And then I think it really, if I was gonna advocate to keep it this way, would be that it really allows the city council to focus on policy. And part of that policy is code enforcement and how strict you want to be and how much you want to enforce it, so. Um, I work for you, and if the, if the decision, as we've already been talking about, is with, with the business licensing, is that code enforcement needs to be stepped up, then that's tasked to me, and then, and then that'll trickle down if that means we need to staff better or change how we, you know, have our codes and we work amongst ourselves to figure that out, I, I, I think, I think you, I think you'd like to keep it this way, only because I think that it, it allows you that freedom to, to think high level and count on it to get done, and if it doesn't, then, you know, you don't have to worry about anybody but me, and it's, uh, hopefully you don't have to worry about that, but, um, I, I, I really think this is, uh, it's an interesting style, there's only forty or so cities that are, that have this, but I.
First eighteen.
Eighteen, oh, I thought it was more.
That was from the League of Minnesota Cities, right?
Well, either way.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm, I'm a fan, as someone that's only been in it for a few months, but, um, I, I do think it allows you to really focus on policy and I, quite honestly, I don't think you'd want to get into, to that level of detail, but, um, I work for you.
I appreciate your perspective on.
And Jesse, your number maybe, where you're higher is that charter cities have a manager, and so, you know, with the word city manager, you don't know offhand if it's a charter city or if it's a Plan B city.
That's probably what it is.
So if I, I, I just want to make sure I understand this, 'cause I tended to be the one that wanted to switch to the A, but I had the impression that the reason we're a complaint-based city and we don't really respond and they don't really, in my opinion, enforce the ordinances is because we are a B and not an A, and I thought if we switched to an A, we could put some teeth in our ordinances and we could get out there and, you know, just enforce what we have on the books. But if you're telling me there's no difference between A and B, as far as, as far as our ordinances go, I personally, I like, I don't, as a council member, I don't want to micromanage the staff. I think you need one person, they know what's going on, we don't know, I don't know the day-to-day operation, so. When I was reading that, and then I thought, oh, that's not what I was led to believe, so. Uh, 'cause this question has been asked before about switching, so we could, uh, switch from a complaint-based city, but I, I understand if you see something as a resident of this town, you don't ask, you don't call up. I think you've got to call the city, you know, not me, you gotta call the city and say you've got a concern with the, the way they keep their yard or whatever that you're like, so I, I would, my personal opinion is we stay where we are. That's my opinion.
And, and think of the difference in A and B is really, if you want to summarize it in, in like, in a few words, management style.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's really what it is, the laws, because you're a statutory city, the only time you're gonna have differences between statutory and charter cities.
Okay.
I agree, I don't want to have to be involved.
No.
With managing a staff that I, I don't see on, on even a weekly basis, so. So far you've been doing a great job, so I, I agree, I, I was more, um, inclined to switch truly based on fees. So if there's no difference, it sounds like we're kind of unique, being that we're one of only eighteen cities in Minnesota that is a statutory B, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would say that it's kind of, it has the benefits, it has that, that benefit of what you get of a charter city, but you're still governed by the, by the, but you don't have some of the oddness, I think, of a charter city, sorry for anybody who was a charter city. Um, and, you know, and, but you're still subject to this, to the, uh, to the, um, statute with regards to statutory city.
Okay, good.
I'm comfortable staying as a B then too.
Yes. Any thoughts?
Good. No, no questions at all?
No questions.
All right, we're staying. Okay, let's go to the next one.
Thanks for looking all that up.
Thank you for that.
It has been a big question for a long time.
Number nine, middle, missing middle housing bills opposition resolution.
So I have a brief introduction and then some LMC model, or not model, but, uh, some programs that were put out. Regarding this bill, it's called the Missing Middle Housing Bill, which in the very, very short version is it's a, it's a bill that's being heard in legislature that, preempts certain aspects of cities' ability to zone and, if you don't mind, Councilmember McInney, I would say we spoke about this briefly, um, so I know you're familiar, but the leak items are in the packet, and then along with that is a resolution which would, um, basically say that the city of mound opposes the, the, uh, the language in the current bill. I understand, Scott, that it's changed a little bit since committee, but, um, the gist of it is still there. And for what it's worth, I would say, when I, I think my first meeting here was the city of mound, city council approving a year-long comp plan amendment regarding, um, you know, zoning, so this is very pertinent.
This, this is one of those bills where I go, did anybody even read it before voting on this? I, I mean, it's just an appalling bill, literally stripping cities and really it gets right down to homeowners' choice to move their city forward in a fashion they see fit. Um, and I've been following, we, we probably all have been since it got put in our inbox in February from the League of Minnesota Cities, and I've been following it ever since it got out of committee, so, um, when I was in a delegate meeting last week, there were several cities that were contemplating doing resolutions, so. Jesse and I had a conversation about it, and I appreciate your putting this together. Um, and this would be a letter, if we end up passing it, that would go to our legislators in St. Paul. And we could also put this on our website and social media for residents to reach out to their legislators as well. Um, if they're opposing this government overreach is really what it is.
So I, I'll just say to summarize the, the legislation, and I will say that there's been some modifications that just came out of committee. But the intent of the bill is to allow, um, high-density housing, four to eight units on, in, basically anywhere in the city, so including R, R one zones or residential zones with single-family homes next to it.
Mm-hmm.
Without regard, with no regard to parking, no regard to, um, any infrastructure. And no ability to capture park dedication, none of, none of the things that you normally would see. So you could, you could have a single-family home, and if you have a teardown next to you, next to you, no, you've got a fourplex. That's, that's.
And it could be up to a hundred fifty feet tall.
Now, I will say that, um, and it's an administrative, council would never see it. So it's an adminis, it would be administrative act, you check, 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 go ahead and build, getting a building permit. It would never go, it would, basically, it would never go to a plan commission, it would never go to the city council, there would be no neighborhood, neighborhood or citizen input on it. That's the intent. Now, I just got an update, uh, yesterday, I looked from the league, and, and the bill that came out of committee, they did listen to the League of Minnesota Cities. So some of the, and, some of the changes are, the, let's see, this is, this is what's added to the bill, the multifamily development may not be constructed on a lot zone for single-family detached home unless otherwise authorized by law, rule, or ordinance. That's new, so that takes away that issue, no, that was, I talked about, if you're in a single-family residential area, there's ability for conditional use permits, um, then they had language in here talking about adequacy of existing public infrastructure, those are added in. And then they've also added something in about some off-street parking requirements. Now, I will say that, um, the original intent of the bill that was there in the legislation is what I just said, which was build it anywhere without any public input at all. Um, and no council oversight. Um, you could wake up next day and know, so you know you have an apartment, something being built.
Right.
I, I think, if you look at the resolution, it talks about what the, what the city has done with regard to its long-term planning, and this kind of takes away with it, and the demand, you know, takes away the, the public's ability to have any input, what their, what goes on in their city. Plus the comp plan, you, you took a year and a lot of work to get to that point with met council approving it. It doesn't, also your twenty twenty, twenty forty plan has gone through a long process, a lot of input. Um, the resolution itself is still there, even though there's been these changes, nothing's done until it becomes a law. And there's, it could be changed again, it could be, you, you don't know, and so.
There, there's nothing, it's so misleading, the missing middle housing. It, it literally does nothing to solve that problem, and that's where I go, do people actually read these bills? Or do they just go, oh, missing middle housing, uh, I'm concerned about that, so I'll pass it? It, it doesn't do anything to solve that.
So, so the, the intent of the resolution, I believe, is just to state rationale for the opposition and that the city council is, is opposed to it regardless of what comes out. Um, but it sounds like there is some movement on it, but it's, it, I think there's other cities still putting up an opposition that you don't want to go back to where it was.
So in regards to this resolution, how often would we want or need to be keeping up on the revisions and then?
Well, until it passes, it's, it's, talks about any future.
Well, this is the one.
Changes in the bill.
Yeah, this, the league, the league is doing their part with lobbying.
Okay.
On it. Um, they've been, uh, they've been at the committee meetings, they've done a lot of, uh, speaking at the committees, and I think they've had, um, I believe, based on what, what I'm looking at right here from the league, they've had an impact. And, and this is just the re, resolution that says, hey, we're, we don't like what's going on here. It's non-binding, just, we don't like it. Um, probably wouldn't revisit it again, but I want to keep up on what's going on, just, just so you know. But I hate reading, I do hate reading bills because, you know, so many that don't pass and that do pass and, and I'm more concerned, for my end, I'm, you know, I'm more concerned of what's the law gonna be. But the, the, but this, this one has a direct impact to strip the city and the citizens of that local input and local control.
I don't know if you guys saw Andrew Meyer's last email, but he addressed it too and voted no on it, so.
He's the only person that voted no.
He did a good job explaining why, you know.
So he called me, I'm sure he called probably you guys too, but.
Well, I've had several conversations with him since February about this.
When it, when he first came out and said, hey, are you, are you for local control or not? Like, um, okay. Uh, then we went down to City Day on the Hill and the room was packed, I don't know how many people were in there, a couple hundred people.
Couple hundred.
And, uh, there was a Republican and a Democrat on the House side and same on the Senate side, so there's four of them up there talking about it. And anyway, when this subject came up, the whole place booed. So it doesn't sound like it's a very popular thing.
Well, it got through committee.
At that point, well, and you can either read the notes or what, I don't know if it's videotaped, but.
At one time, wasn't there going to be cities under a certain population?
Well, it was like ten thousand.
Yeah, which were under ten thousand.
Right.
It's not good for any Minnesota city.
So bottom line, this, just a resolution that, um, says that we oppose it as, as our city. We just spent all this time, energy, money doing our comp plan amendment last year that, which is funny, 'cause when Meyer's called me, I was like, well, we just did all that, and he's like, well, that could be a waste of time. Like, well, we just did it. So, anyway, any other questions on this? Okay. Well, can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion, uh, for the city of mound to approve resolution opposing proposed legislation, missing middle housing HF four zero zero nine and SF three nine six four, and similar bills going forward to pass this.
Okay, good motion, can I get a second?
Second?
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
I'm in a state.
Obscene, okay.
And then Jesse, will you, once we've, once this is, now that it's passed, will you be forwarding, forwarding this to all the legislators?
Yes.
And then can we somehow put in this information on our website or social media? Because there has been a lot of impact from residents also reaching out to the legislators.
Got it.
Regarding this. Thank you.
All right, number ten, we got com, comments and reports from councilmembers, Councilmember Pew.
Um, nothing for me.
Okay, Councilmember Larson?
Um, I attended the police commission meeting along with Jesse and Jason. That was on the thirteenth, I believe, of March, and, um, I don't know, do you have notes on that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I'll let you, I'll let you talk about it then.
Okay. All right, that's it?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember McInney?
No.
Councilmember Castellano?
Nothing.
Okay, well, see the, the notes, uh, embedded social worker, um, we're gonna do a request to have her come out and talk again, I think it's been a year. She covers a lot more than I thought she did, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, anyway, it sounded more.
Yeah.
Like a lot, but, anyway, can you, Jesse, have her come out?
You know, and speaking about that, could we, could we get a presentation from maybe her and the fire department about the position that the emergency response people are taking around falls? I think we need to have an update on that conversation.
Yeah, good point.
Do you want to have?
Did you hear what I was saying? I'm sorry.
I, I.
Okay, I was asking if we could have maybe the fire chief as well as the social worker give us an update on what's happening around emergency response, because there's a lot of change in how people want to address that and the cost of it, and I think we should get updated.
The fall.
It's the fall issues, yeah.
Assistant lift, yeah. I think the police chief, police, um, I think last time a paper out, they mentioned it too.
Mm-hmm. But there's, there's some underlying legislation going on.
And we're gonna, have we requested a workshop yet from the fire department?
Tentatively, with our second meeting in April, we did intend to have, uh, the fire chief at a six P M workshop to discuss, um, ongoing fire coverage and, um, kind of how Chief Peterson's laying out the future of duty crews and, and that's actually, I'm sure, a topic that he would love to cover and has covered at fire commission meeting and some other. and that's actually, I'm sure, a topic that he would love to cover and has covered at fire commission meeting and some other meetings, so. Probably just something that maybe is included in that, but if, if we get social work here, maybe that evening too, we could, maybe we could just roll that into seven o'clock too, so.
Okay. So, yeah, at the fire commission, we did talk about that as well, and the duty crew thing would help-
Yeah.
-on that. But, yeah, we, we're planning on having him out in April, he couldn't make it in today or the first-
Right, he's, he's out of the state right now.
Yeah. Take valuables with you, lock cars, hand doors of your house and your car at the dog park over in Orno. If you see any issues, just call the department, call the police. There's a group that's keeps, well, I guess this is a new one, but there's a group that's targeting people there. Don't leave your window down, don't leave your purse, your wallet, or cash, you know, invisible. They are at full staff now, which is good. We talked about potential coffee with the cop, and that's something that maybe we want to have them come out to one of our spots here. They, they kind of offered it, with, you know, COVID or whatever, they kind of tailed down a little bit, but now they're kind of doing a lot more. So, I don't know if we've really been on that with, with them, so we should, we should get on that.
So, you're suggesting what, as council members or as citizens?
Uh, no, like citizens, so we would throw it on social or maybe the next newsletter, and then say, hey, you know, June first, you know, Saturday, June first, come have coffee with the cop at Caribou or whatever. They buy their own coffee, but they would be able to talk to the cops, you know, be able to interact with them and stuff, so. I only really have one thing, really. We did a joint meeting, me and you, and a lot of the WCC group. Has there been any contact with them after that, really?
Not on that just yet, but it's been a discussion with staff, and so we're gearing up for the next event.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So, everybody knows WCC, they do a lot of events in town and stuff, and I guess they don't quite feel like they're being heard from the city, and like, maybe not as supportive, per se. And so, I, you know, I was a little defensive in part of it, saying, well, you know, we, we appointed for the first time ever someone to the WCC, Councilmember McEnany, and I guess nobody knew that. So, I said, okay, well, that's, it was brand new, I'll take the sword on that one. But we want to, anyway, kind of increase our communication channels with, with them, and they do a lot of good in our community, so we want to make sure that they're being heard, as well as we, you know, we have things that we need to be taken care of as well, so. Anyway, so we just had a meeting and just kind of talked about that at high level and said that Jesse would reach out, and I know you and Councilmember McEnany go to a lot of the meetings, and if not all of them. So, anyway, hopefully, we can work on that a little bit.
Well, it'd probably be good for the park commission to also meet with them and talk about the events park, because, you know, before Eric was kind of the liaison with this and that, but we do need to talk about the opportunity of partnerships and events for that.
Well, that's something, if you want to set that up too, or maybe you could invite them out to a parks meeting? Or, I don't know if you guys do a workshop or something, or maybe just invite them to a, to the next parks meeting? Just see, there's ways I think you guys can collab better, so. That's kind of it, so. Do you have any other comments on that?
Not on that, no.
Okay. All right, hope there's nothing else. Take a motion to-
Say, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I do have one-
I always forget about you. Comments and reports from the same address.
Had a brief conversation on the address redacting, it's come up at a couple meetings. It was explained to me that it was something that happened at a staff level. I don't know when or where or why, so I guess I would come back to the council and say, if you want to return the way it was, it sounds like nobody at Orno PD is too concerned about it, except for there will always, or there will be times when, if either minors are involved or there's certain sensitive subjects, but I think that was already sort of the way it was, so. I wasn't just gonna say, yes, go ahead, but I assume based off conversations here that that would be preferred.
What are you talking about?
The addresses were laid out.
Redacting the street name.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It was helpful to identify problem areas.
We wouldn't get the numbers.
That's great.
So, we can get it back, I don't know if the report for, I suppose, March wouldn't have been done yet, but so. That will be changed, and then, I just wanted to mention that there was supposed to be a really, really huge storm Sunday, and Ryan had all the guys all fired up, and they did a good job. Thankfully, it wasn't as bad as it was, and then today was supposed to be not that, and the guys still got out there, and Ryan had them all going real early this morning, so very happy about that. We didn't hear anything at City Hall that I'm aware of, or at least I didn't, and I think, expect that tomorrow there will be some cleanup in the morning, but, yeah.
I saw them five o'clock Monday morning.
Yeah, I mean, to your point-
They went down my street.
It's like you don't hear anything, because everything's going great, you know, I mean, on our road, it was like they were out there on Sunday, and I mean, nothing even got a chance to accumulate, those guys are awesome.
Yes, we're very happy.
All right, anything else? All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.